Please rise for the invocation by Reverend David Roberts, Pastor Morningstar, First Baptist Church. Okay, well, I will do it myself. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to get together to conduct the people's business. We pray your guidance as we try to make the decisions in a just and fair way. And we want your hand upon us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen again.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a presentation by the BDC Business Development Committee.
Mr. Newville.
Mr. Newville.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Council, and Staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Jeff Newville. I'm with the Business Development Committee of the city. The Business Development Committee's job is to support the growth and continuation of existing and new business ventures in the Hickory community. And we all recognize that when a new business opens up, we're very quick and very happy to welcome them, but not often enough do we take the time to recognize those businesses that have been with us for a long period of time and contributed to our community. As an extension of life well crafted, the City of Hickory established the Business Well-Crafted Award to recognize and thank those businesses and employees who have made a major contribution and impact on this community for many generations. And this award honors businesses that have been in the Hickory area for, operating for over 75 years, at least 75 years. So tonight, I am very pleased to present the city's Business Well-Crafted Award to Johnson Piano Exchange and its owner, Alan Wilson. I'd ask Alan to come up and join me up here. And bring friends and family if you would like. And up on the wall here, we have an article that's currently on the Hickory Well-Crafted website about Johnson Piano and Organ Exchange. And for nearly a century, Johnson Piano Exchange has served the Hickory area, striving to keep music playing in schools, churches, and homes. The company is, and always has been, family-run and has contributed to the lives of families across the city. Johnson Piano and Organ Exchange is the primary source of pianos/organs in the greater Hickory region. Since 1922, it has sold high-quality pianos, adding organs in 1935, the date of their invention. Today, the business sells new pianos, both digital and acoustic, antique pianos, used pianos and organs. They also have an extensive repair and restoration service. So please join me in congratulating Alan Wilson and Johnson Piano and Organ Exchange. Jeff, and Mayor, Council, thank you all so very much. It really was a shock and honor to be recognized just for being stubborn. I will say that it's been a challenge. As anybody who's run a business knows lately, the figures for the music industry are a little bit harsh, more harsh than some others. The numbers are, half of the music dealers in the country have gone away since the year 2000. So that gives you an idea just how tough that business is. But we're noticing things that are looking up, and we do appreciate each and every person who walks through our door, and we promise the best of service. Thank you to the city for recognizing us for our efforts, and we look forward to a long relationship.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize some special visitors tonight from Troop 300 Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We have Dalton Lutes, Dylan Lutes, Lucas Winters, and Abe Levin. Okay, stand up. And they are accompanied by Kelly Winters.
Being an old scout, I've got a question. I'd like to know what that alien patch is all about on your pocket.
That is from our scout camp that we went to this year, Camp La Gio. And the theme this year was alien invasion sort of thing.
Gotta be prepared.
About they gotta learn to control?
And by golly, they invaded us here tonight. Okay. If we could, Mrs. Clark, we'd like to have those names in the minutes of this meeting. So in a few days, your names will be permanently in the minutes of the Hickory City Council meeting. Next, we have retiring members of volunteer boards and commissions. Council, join me up here, and let's honor these people who have given their time and energy to serve the city.
See, where do we form the garlic?
Now, I have the names of those present, is that right? Dr. Jeff Winters. Has been valuable member of the Community Affairs Commission. These... Oh, okay. Okay. Well, we have a number here, Mark, unable to attend. So what I want to point out is, about one out of every 200 residents of Hickory serves on a board and commission of the city. And that's about, I might have to correct, that's about one-half of 1%. It is a valuable service they provide to us. They give us input of their personal opinions, as well as their representation of a broader group of residents. If all of this had to come down to the seven of us, I think we would not get the same cross-section of input that we see in here. From the Community Affairs Commission, Mr. Lee Royer. And my favorite commission member, I'll just commit it, Charles Fisher.
How is his unpaid campaign managing? Well, I'll tell you this, he brought out the whole ass.
Oh, thank you. Is that all I get?
I'll be preaching and then it's gonna end.
It's maybe on YouTube, Russell.
He does preach. He tried that up. He preached to me a lot of times. For that sake, I heard it there, too. Parks and Recreation Commission, Ken Signler. There you go. Just hug somebody.
Not on this end.
The Tourism Development Authority, a real veteran, a guy who has been really a GoTo person. I mean, everybody in this group is valuable, but he will go. Has been our representative, the city's representative. Thanks. I don't see any youth councilmen.
I don't believe any of them.
But I'll tell you something about these youth councilmen. Just like, just like all of our board members, the busiest people get involved in it. And our youth council people, they're involved in athletics, they're good students, they study hard, and so I'm sure their attendance is good, but they couldn't make it here tonight. I also want to recognize our City of Hickory staff, who are the liaisons with the various boards and commissions and the ones that I have listed here. You got Dave Leonetti, mentioned three times. Okay, well, that's good, Dave. He's an overture. Cal Overdy, Clyde Neal, Ryan Fraser's in here a couple of times. Louise Humphrey, who's just celebrating a birthday, today or yesterday?
Today.
39 years old. Matt McLeod. And of course, many of these, these are not all of our commissions, by the way, so we have other staffers involved, too. These are the commissions that have people who are retiring from service. And many of our staffers also are liaisons with various neighborhood groups we have across the city. So it's a team effort. We couldn't do it without these volunteers, and we appreciate your service very much. Charles, how many years have you been serving? I don't even lie, I'm literally in this room.
Nine or 12, I don't know. They want me to go train more, but I'll be killed.
Hey, let's hear it for everybody who's here. Okay, the next department, please, join me up here.
And this is Melissa Miller, Mr. Mayor, our Finance Officer, and Amanda Stanley, the Accounting Supervisor. Amanda and Melissa.
You all face this group, okay. Mr. Will, you're...
They do all the work.
We pride ourselves on full disclosure of our financial actions, what we plan to do, as well as what we did. Each year, we have public meetings, public input, and tell people what we're going to do financially, and at the end of the year, we come back and tell them what we did financially. Year after year, we report on where there's variance. It has to go through this council, and we approve it in open session. We've recently gone through the budget process, and for about two decades, we've received the award for achievement in reporting of our budget data, which means that it is complete, it is easy to understand, it's big, it's about this big. So it's not as easy as many people like to see it, but it's supposed to be easy to understand, and easy to read, and fully descriptive of what our activities are. And I am proud that for the 17th consecutive year, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has presented us with certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Thank you all very much. Speech, no speech?
We would just like to thank staff, just the two of us here, but we have a lot of people that aren't on this, and we're going to do it without them. And a lot of the people sitting in this room, a lot of the things I mentioned, for the CAFER, it's much greater than just, we couldn't just care about the whole city.
The CAFER is the comprehensive annual...
Financial report.
Comprehensive annual financial report. They call it the CAFER. Here somebody say, "Where's the CAFER?" And Ryan Loverne is going to make a presentation on behalf of the Business Development Committee.
Mayor Wright, members of Council, I'm glad to be here. Ryan Loverne, I'm actually wearing two hats today. I serve on the Business Development Committee, and I'm also a commercial realtor here in Hickory. Let's see, I think about a year ago, the city took the step and invited all the commercial realtors in to kind of have an open-door policy meeting and discuss all the changes and the new renovations that have happened down the lobby. And it really seemed to go a long way with my peers, just opened that door for planning to talk to us more, building permits there, and we did it again, and I'd just like to give you a recap on that. We met about two weeks ago and talked about the branding report. Mandy did a good job showing us that, and also showed us the video that was just done. Planning staff also updated us on the project management program, which we're all very familiar with now, and had great discussions. One thing that we were real happy to see is that there's been a huge jump in the satisfaction, not only from the city, but from the commercial realtors. And whether it's real or perceived, unfortunately, we've had to battle, we, meaning the city, has to battle with how difficult it is to have a development project here. And there've been a lot of small steps that are now starting to really add up and show that we are business-friendly. And it makes it, me feel so good when I'm working with a client to say, hey, it's the City of Hickory. It's not that we're going to bend the rules, but we're going to be easy to get along with, they're going to be friendly, and everybody's going to go out of their way to really help. Another big jump, almost 60%, that's currently active, is the project with the City of Hickory active or as it's being completed. So most of these people are in the middle of it, which, that's typically when you have the most complaints. So that's good, the people that actually answered the survey. Satisfaction of the plan review process, over 60% were extremely satisfied. Less than 20%, neither satisfied or just satisfied. Overall process working well, good dialogue. I won't read them all to you, you guys can see this. The one I like the best, go back here. Yeah, it says that they're extremely satisfied with our building experience in Hickory and excited to partner with such a business-friendly city. And that's really what, what this is all about, is welcoming business here and helping our little town, our city grow. The big thing that I took away, I mean, you can read what's here, talking about the vacant building grant guidelines, everything, is there was a general positive reaction in the room. Almost everyone that was invited was there. The turnout was great, we had to pull seats out, we could hardly get everybody fed because there were so many people there. And really just had a lot of good conversation between everyone. Also, one of the things the BDC has been smoking over the last year is, is there a way to host a commercial MLS or multi-list service here? Not suggesting that that's going to be done, but it is on the table to be discussed, seeing if there's a way to have more of a comprehensive look at what commercial properties are available. We always have the suggestion to changing the street names. And we had a little fun with that, and I think that was more of a joke, but we were able to then segue into the wayfinding program, and we're able, I think either Yade or Andrea discussed that it is going to be wrapped up in Inspiring Spaces program. And then we're going to meet again in December, and we're going to do it every six months. So we hope to keep the dialogue going, and overall, just real positive reaction. So we're appreciative. Thank you.
Good job, and thank you. What it shows me is, is our staff are listening and looking for ways to improve. Over the years, I've done an informal survey and asked builders how they feel about our process, and I've gotten a positive response invariably from the builders who do work in a lot of different places. I think some of the people who don't do as much work in other places find, maybe not so much fault with what we are doing, as just the general process, sometimes you'd rather just build it the way you want it. And I understand that, that's human nature. But I am pleased that they said it's better. It's great. We have several interns here, and Mr. Berry, I'm going to let you, if you don't mind, introduce them, or introduce the person who will introduce them.
You're going to put me on the spot, and I'm going to forget their names, Mayor. The newest one that I want to introduce is Amber Eats. Amber, if you want to stand up. She's Newton Conover graduate, right? And is a legal intern, she's splitting time with the city and the county, going to start her second year of law school at NC Central. And then Dylan, we've introduced Dylan before. And Blake, they're management interns. Now, back in the good old days, we used to bring in interns during the summer and pay them a dollar an hour. Now, we pay them nothing. So things are tough, but they do a great job, and they learn a lot, it's valuable to them in their education process.
Well, I also want to point out the one you forgot now, just, yeah. Oliver Wright.
Oh, okay, Oliver.
Oliver is, Oliver's a Lenora Ryan University student, working with Office of Communication. His main project is to update the board and commission webpages on hickorync.gov. His father's on the Recycling Advisory Board, and his name is Jeff Wright, who is a professor at LRU. And in the interest of full disclosure, I'd like to point out that I am not related to Mr. Wright, nor have I ever met him until just now. Okay. Person's requesting to be heard. We are going to start off with, we're going to ask people to state their address, and I'm going to ask everybody to do it, since we have six people, two, four, six, seven people signed up to speak. And we'll start with Cliff Moon.
Cliff Moon, 2925 Eighth Street Court, Northeast Hickory, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. At the last City Council meeting, and at meetings prior to that, I have advocated first to have these meetings videotaped, and second, to have them subsequently broadcast on the Charter Government Channel. I have repeatedly commended this council for finding a fiscally prudent way to initiate videotaping and for posting the videos on the city website, which is being done. I stand before you tonight to urge you again to broadcast these meetings to the public on cable TV. I do not have time in the three minutes, about three minutes, to reiterate all the reasons you should do this. I've said them some times before, but, and but while no one expects a Hickory rebroadcast, excuse me, of the Hickory City Council to generate higher ratings than even a rerun of NCIS, it truly baffles me why any elected official wouldn't want to use every possible means and opportunity to educate the public and raise public awareness about the discussions and actions taken by the body to which he or she was elected. If you are proud of your service and believe, as I know you do, that your actions are truly for the betterment of this city, how could you possibly not want more citizens to see and hear about it? And after some of the responses to the recent HDR article raising questions regarding conflict of interest, whether true or not, I would think that having a video record, excuse me, going out to the public might prove advantageous as an added source of accurate information. I note if I were sitting where you are tonight, I would welcome the video verification of what I had actually said leading up to my vote, and I would want it publicized as much as possible. In talking with Mr. Berry about this, he appropriately raised a concern about the quality of any TV broadcast, and I do say that is an appropriate concern. But having reviewed all the videotaped meetings and having seen for myself the high-definition quality of those recordings, I just have to say, all of you look really good on camera. You really do. Of course, you know, it's not how you look that really matters to us citizens. It's what you say and how you vote that affects our lives out here. So there's no need to improve the quality, in my opinion, just let the people have the greatest possible opportunity to see it. By the way, the newspaper reported that staff and council decided it could not produce a high enough quality broadcast to portray the city in a positive light. I don't want to even begin to unpack that statement, but for the life of me, I do not recall an actual vote by council on that particular point. Perhaps I'm mistaken, I certainly could be, but I haven't found that, thank you, may I continue, I've just got just a little bit more, Mr. Mayor. But I haven't found that vote in the minutes, and unfortunately, since you have deleted the previous YouTube videos, and I say this very hesitantly, but I did look at it, and I'm not an attorney, and everybody knows that, but there is a potential violation of the North Carolina Freedom of Information Act and the state's public disclosure law. And I brought that law with me, so I'd really appreciate Mr. Crone at some time giving me information about whether that's accurate. But I'm unable to view that record for myself because of those deleted videos at this point. Finally, Mr. Berry stated in the paper, quote, "It's not a matter of whether we could," meaning broadcast the meetings, "it's a matter of whether we should." Mr. Berry, members of the council, as to whether you should, this citizen's answer is absolutely yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Joe Brannick.
Joe Brannick, 812 Fourth Street Drive Northwest. Mr. Mayor, Council members, I understand there is a departmental report tonight on the legal opinion regarding the recent conflict of interest matter. Aside from that discussion, I would ask the council to also consider the public perception standards and aspects associated with conflicts of interest that are there to ensure the highest level of transparency that the public deserves. I don't believe anyone thinks that conflicts of interest necessarily mean illegal activity, nor do I believe that conflicts of interest are necessarily limited to financial matters. But was it a conflict of interest when Ms. Patton voted to approve her daughter's application for a first-time homebuyer's grant? Was it a conflict of interest when Mr. Seaver voted to approve similar consent agendas, agenda items involving his son? Was it a conflict of interest when Mr. Meisner voted to reject rental property task force recommendations while his property was in violation of city nuisance codes? I would like to commend Mr. Lell for recusing himself during the discussion and subsequent votes years ago about the business improvement district tax. He stated that he owned commercial property inside the bid district and thought it would be inappropriate to participate. I would also like to commend the mayor for recusing himself back in January regarding an issue with the city's land development code and what he saw as a potential conflict involving his sign company. But wasn't it a conflict of interest when the mayor's sign company provided the signage for the city-funded FBO building without making those business interests publicly known? And wasn't it a conflict of interest when Mayor Wright failed to publicly acknowledge his own rental property interest prior to voting to reject the rental property task force recommendations? What I do know is this, my confidence in this council's ability to enforce its own conflict of interest ordinances are sadly directly proportional to its willingness to actually identify said conflicts.
Ms. Jett.
Go ahead and say that first name.
Kalaya?
Almost, Kalila.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kalila Jett, and I've been before you before, a couple of years back, in reference to the pools. Well, I'm here today and... Well, I'm here today in concern of, I've started an organization, a basketball team, to add more programming to Parks and Rec. But in doing that, to practice, we were not, we are not allowed to hold any practices in Hickory Parks and Rec. So I'm coming here tonight to address that issue because it hasn't, I don't see a clear reason as to why Parks and Rec would reject a professional organization that we have put together in order to make more programming in our community. So I've done several programs in the community. I've done a staff program. I was a lifeguard also at the pool and I continue to do these things for free at volunteer. I've done, the successful program happened in 95 when I was over the staff program at the Brown Penn and I came back when I moved back to Hickory in '07 and started another one and I did it for about two years and then I moved on into the school system. Well, this year I decided to take on basketball because it's a big interest of my daughters. But even though I'm not coaching, I manage the team and in the biggest hardship that I found is finding gyms to practice in. And I feel if we have a gym right in our community that's convenient for everyone, I don't understand the reason why we can't use it. So I'm coming to Hickory City Council tonight to see if there's something you could do to help us. And my team came tonight and I have Deja, Cory, Victoria, Tatiana, and Samantha, all here with some of their parents to support because we are a good organization. We play in about five or six tournaments this season and to prepare for next year, we would like some convenient gym locations. So that's my issue and concern for tonight and I hope that you can, you know, take it and address it and see if we can come up with some solutions to help our organization. Thanks.
I appreciate you coming. I appreciate you young people and I appreciate the collaborative way you've approached that issue, asking if we can work together to find a solution. April Hill.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, excuse my voice, I just came for vacation and I am just, my voice is shot. But I'm also, we also have an AAU team and we also are in the same situation as Kalyla as far as practicing, we have nowhere to go. But now the, our, the Brown Penn where we go a lot, we, my children participate in all their activities, everything they do, we participate. But when we come together as a basketball team, we can't go inside the gym and we pay taxes there and that's just really concerning us and it's really deterred our children from wanting to go there and participate in their activities or even hiring when, when it's time for us to be, to practice and need a place to practice, we can't be there. But when we go out, our name is Hickory Swag, so we represent Hickory. We do a good job. We've got a good group of young ladies, a lot of them are not here on vacation and stuff. But we'll be starting back up in August and we would like a place to participate and also call our, call our home. And also what we do, participate in all the activities, they have different things they call upon our young people to be there. But when it's time for us to need them back, they don't return that service because they say we are AAU team, we can't, we're not allowed to practice there, but we can pay taxes there. So it's really become an issue and we just ask that you just, you know, help us resolve this.
Mr. Larry Pope.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, and City Council members. I was at the City Council meeting a couple of meetings ago when there was a long discussion about the rental spaces on Union Square for the businesses to set up tables and chairs for customers who were downtown spending their money at the businesses located on Union Square. I will tell you that I've had some difficulties on Union Square because of all the tables and chairs and all the people who are frequenting those businesses. So I requested and met Attorney Dula and one of the Public Works Supervisors down on Union Square to find out what we could do to get me directly from the railroad track at the crosswalk beside the old train station to Fred's Pharmacy, which I visit on a regular basis for medication that I purchased from Fred's in supporting the downtown business. I requested a mobility specialist that came from Winston-Salem to Hickory to go downtown with me to look at Union Square and she was a little bit set back because of all of the barriers and obstacles that had to be overcome to get me from the crosswalk to Fred's Pharmacy. There is no direct pathway and I asked the city to remove and place a different surface that could easily be followed to keep me from the obstacles that are there in the way. I have to ask the question. After the City Council discussed and made the decision to choice a $25 fee for the businesses to have designated spaces in front of their businesses on Union Square for their patrons, I would like to know, is that $25 being collected? If it is being collected, then how is it being used by the city and what fund does that money go under?
Three minutes.
Thank you. Can I have another couple of minutes?
Sure.
I'll wind up. I would like to see something in writing that shows where that money goes to in our city budget that is being collected by the city from these businesses and that the city will put forth all efforts to make sure that there are not barriers in the way that keep citizens with disabilities or any other citizen from being unable to frequent the businesses that you are trying to grow and foster on Union Square. So I hope that the response will be forthcoming and that you can show me where that money is going and that that money is truly being collected from these businesses and how it's being used to benefit the city of Hickory and the citizens of our city. Thank you.
I realize we're going to have a discussion on conflict of interest and, but unfortunately, I see that people have been leaving this meeting who only heard Mr. Brannick's comments. I just want to assure everyone here that to the best of my knowledge and belief and with advice of council, I believe I have never been guilty of a conflict of interest in this office. Dr. Joseph Engelfield.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be here. Hickory City Council has ignored the health and wellness of our citizens. It is time to replace city leaders when they choose to ignore the findings of validated scientific studies like the Gallup Health Way Wellbeing Index that ranks us the fifth most miserable area in the country. It is a charade to ride on the backs of nonprofits to the title of all-American city. Uninspired citizens wander our streets due to the lack of jobs. At 10%, we have the second highest unemployment rate in the state. We need solutions, not an attitude that nothing can be done. The city must respond to these national surveys in a meaningful way. The failure of, the failure to maintain parks and recreational facilities throughout Hickory during the 12-year tenure of the mayor is especially destructive to the health and well-being of the citizens of Hickory. We need jobs, not excuses. We need to bulldoze through the lack of transparency in City Council decisions. City council and staff have not followed the spirit and letter of public record law, NC General Statute 132. Public information should be open and accessible on a city website permanently with all public city meetings on cable TV. City leaders and staff must truthfully file conflict of interest forms in a legible manner on a yearly basis according to the law. City staff must insist the council do so legally and in good faith. We need to fill positions on independent boards and commissions without delay, free of nepotism and cronyism. These positions are supposed to provide independent guidance. These should also be subject to the same conflict of interest requirements. No new taxes should be levied until citizens can readily access and carefully review projects and budgets, including the $80 million Inspiring Space Plan. We need evidence-based plans with full, meaningful public participation, not pet projects. Stop reading separate funds that belong to the citizens of Hickory. I want to encourage public input, we've heard some good input tonight, and dialogue with the citizens of Hickory, all the citizens, as many voices are not being heard. The local economy has suffered greatly under this mayor, yet he takes no responsibility for this decline. Our stale leaders have been in office for too long. It is time for fresh, new ideas. We need term limits. We need inspiring leaders to inspire citizens. As a local medical doctor and community leader for the past 25 years, I'm announcing my candidacy for the position of Mayor of Hickory. I am ready to lead Hickory in a new direction. I ask the citizens of Hickory to register to vote and to vote for me, Dr. Engelfield, for Mayor. Thank you.
And Jay Franklin Davis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jay Franklin Davis. I live in Hickory, North Carolina, 715 First Avenue Place Southeast. Also have a home in the Ridgefield community. First of all, I'd like to say that on July 11th, it was a program that was at Lenora Ryan College. It was called The House I Live In. That was a very good program and it was more or less national and we could actually have used this, the information that, that we got on this to help better our community. And I, the gentleman who was in charge of it, he said that the police chief, he had something else he had to do and I didn't see any of our city council there. And I think that if there's anything that we can do, any tools that we can use to help better our community and our city, I think we all should go and do it. The next, the one question I have is, it's funny, recently I noticed on the committee, on the different committees, I have an interest on becoming a member of the Community Relations Council. I looked at one in particularly and I spoke with a city council member and with, with all of you being at our disposal, so I called one and I expressed my interest. And all of a sudden, I noticed that one, it was, it wasn't actually 9/13, it was 9/11/2011. And all of a sudden, tonight, I see two people who have been nominated for that, that board who hasn't even been here and who hasn't, doesn't show an interest in it. All of you know, my family has been a big part of Hickory and I've been here most of my life and how can someone nominate someone who's only been here a few days, who really doesn't know what the community needs? I'm asking again, what is it? Why is it? Are you afraid? What are you afraid of? And I would like, after the City Council meeting, for someone, one of, one of my city council members and even the mayor, if you would please, answer this for me. I've been through the city college, I've got a key to the city and seems like it still doesn't open up any doors for me. Please, answer this question with me, to me, for me, soon. And I plan on volunteering on other boards, if only given me the chance. We're all in this together. Remember, I keep saying that. We're all in this together. Thank you for listening to my humble words and I'll be waiting for an answer after the City Council meeting. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 18th?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That vote is unanimous and all members are approved. Consent agenda? Wait a minute, we have a motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried. Consent agenda, anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to be approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under new business, first item is a public hearing and I want to invite and also introduce a relatively new staff member, Shamari Myrick, planner in the planning department is going to make the presentation. I think this is the first time that Shamari's been to City Council to present a planning item. He is a planner in our department, an ECU pirate, and we were fortunate to lure him away from the city of Charlotte a few months ago. Mr. Myrick.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, the City Council Board members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Tonight we have the hearing for rezoning petition 13-9. The applicant in this case is the city of Hickory, located at 3254 NC Highway 127 South. The request is to rezone Catawba County HC to Hickory CC2. The area is 2.67 acres. The development is a Dollar General and our services are adequate in the area. What we have here is a Hickory by Choice Future Land Use map. As you can see, the subject property, the star right there, is within the Hickory by Choice Future Land Use area and the rezoning of this property would be consistent with the Hickory by Choice 2030. This is the aerial of the, of the subject property outlined in red right here. The property to the north is a food line and the property to the west is a lawn and gardening store, which is in the county. The property to the south is currently in the county and being developed as a advanced auto parts and the property to the east is currently vacant. What we have here is the current zoning. As you can see, the property to the, to the north and the east is currently zoned CC2 and this is our subject property right here, so it would be in accordance with, with that zoning of that parcel. You can also see that there's a mixture of zoning designations with the county as well as Hickory city zoning. This is a picture of the Dollar General. This property was recently annexed into the city and this is- This property was recently annexed into the city, and this is the next step to rezone the property to the city of Hickory's zoning designation. Recommendations, the Hickory Planning Commission and staff recommends approval of this rezoned Any questions?
As is our custom, we first have the people in a public hearing who are opposed to the proposal to speak first, and then the people in favor to rebut, and we have 15-minute time limits and then three-minute, five-minute time limits on surrebuttal. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion is carried.
Second item of New Business is a departmental report, and I'll ask the city's committee of development manager, Mr. David Leonetti, to come to the podium. His report will address a vacant building revitalization and demolition grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. I'm going to have a brief presentation tonight presenting a vacant building demolition grant for 417 11th Street Northwest. This property is owned by Agile, it's a bit of a mouthful, Agile Specialty Inc., doing business as Precision Machine Company. Owned by Steve Ivesta is the owner of the property. Little background on the demolition grant program. It provides grants of up to $20,000 or 35% of eligible project costs for the demolition of vacant buildings within the urban revitalization area. This is the second demolition grant we're proposing since the guidelines were amended in 2011. I believe there were two or, two possibly three, prior to that 2011 amendment to the guidelines. The previous one that you, that council approved earlier this year was the Regency Motel Grant. Little background on the 11th Street Northwest property. It's approximately 19,000 square feet. It was formerly used as a machine shop up until about 10 years ago, I believe, and it's been vacant since then. The applicant plans to spend roughly $35,000 in demolition and site restoration costs. The building at that 35% reimbursement rate would be eligible for approximately $12,000, $12,142 to be exact. The applicant plans to market the property for redevelopment or use as a parking lot by either Century Furniture or Hickory Mechanical, who occupy properties to the south and north respectively. These are just some older photos of the site that I had on my computer. Everything looks roughly the same, except it's about five and a half years more deteriorated since then. The Business Development Committee has recommended approval of the application, and an additional note, the applicant has requested two readings on the agreement tonight due to the fact that there's only one meeting in July to meet some of his project timeframes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And although we have been making a very strong case against second readings the same night of the first readings, there seems to be merit in this one, and in light of Mr. Ivesta's request and not staff's request, I make a motion that we approve it on second reading tonight. Motion by Wright, second by Guest. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion's carried. For those of you who are not regular attendees, the reason for the second reading is to, on certain issues that are of particular importance and involve spending of money and some other factors. We have a second reading two weeks after the first in order to give every council member a chance to entertain input from the public or just reflect on their decision. And there have been times that people have changed their vote at second reading. This one seems to be of a nature that no one would change their vote, and the request or has a meritorious case. So in this very limited, perhaps last time ever situation, we're going to approve it on second reading. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second departmental report, I'll call on Lieutenant Vadel Syke of the Hickory Police Department and Mr. Charles Mackey, also the Police Department. He's our Catawba County Gang Unit Site Coordinator to give council an update on the Catawba County Gang Initiative. Now, although it's called the Catawba County Gang Initiative, the city of Hickory is the lead agent and has been for the last several years since we initially sought a grant. And so it's Hickory city staff with participation from other jurisdictions that put this program together. Lieutenant Syke?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. Like Mr. Berry said, we're going to go over and just give a brief update on the Catawba County Gang Initiative that we have going on. If you would, on the screen here, collaboration of eight law enforcement agencies within the county. Every local police agency is involved in this, as in the police departments within Catawba County. The grant, it was a two-year grant that first started off by the Governor's Crime Commission. It's no longer a funded grant, but we continue going with all the agencies. Of course, you guys know that. We have a community resource coordinator, which is Mr. Mackey. He'll come up and speak a little bit more on the program. Activity started in 2010 when the program first started coming about. In 2011 is when we had our first call-in, and from there, we had up to five call-ins now. Going on our sixth one coming up, probably next fall, next winter sometime, we'll have our sixth call-in. But everything is going well and is going the way it should be going, I think. You guys will be real proud to hear the advancements that are going on with it, and when Mr. Mackey comes up, he'll talk a little bit more about the advancements of it. The initiative's primary focus is to identify potential gang members, group members, and criminal offenses that may be gang or group-related. The crime analysis, or Charles' title is Community Resource Coordinator, gathers extensive intelligence on both networks of individuals in the gang or group community and individual patterns of criminal behavior to identify those with the worst potentials toward violence, and they're the ones that we call in for the call-ins. The coordinator also identifies a community resource base of services provided by faith-based community leaders willing to offer assistance in changing behaviors. And once they're identified, these individuals are notified that the community's intent to stop the violence. And then they're called in, and the offenders are notified at the meetings, which we call the call-ins, and at them call-ins, I'll call Mr. Mackey up now, and he'll go through the actual process of the call-ins and what occurs at those call-ins.
As you see here, the initiative is data-driven, and once these violent offenders are identified, then we bring them to a call-in, and it happens right here to express the seriousness of the call-in, and that is an actual scene there, one of our toughest presented there. The ultimate goal is to reduce violence. That's our focus, but it's a two-pronged attack. We actually want them to have voluntary compliance. The fact that we don't want them to commit any trigger offenses, we make that clear to them, and we will outline the trigger offenses in a later slide, that we really want them to become productive citizens in the community. That's our goal, and that they accept the resources, the network that we've put together. But if not, then we let them know that they will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law at all levels of the judicial system, and that they will be receiving some undue and unwanted attention and prosecuted again to the fullest extent. Here we, sitting in here when we have these call-ins, they get to see and hear from all levels of law enforcement, and they really get details on what will happen and what could happen if they stay on the path that they're on. We have an extensive resource network. These are just a few people or organizations, agencies, that help us to make sure that we have a combined, a real extensive network to handle any issues that they may need addressed. I'd like to add here, sitting inside of Mac, that the Recreation Department is really a good resource for us, that we utilize their facilities there. The community, the community, one of the biggest things about the success of this program nationwide is that the community is involved, and so they don't have anyone to really run to in the sense of stopping the violence from the message. So we have community, here's a list of a couple of the speakers that have represented the community and letting them know that the community wants the violence to stop also. This is just not a police initiative. There's another scene as far as the setting of the call-in, and again, I just invite you to come and see and hear the seriousness that we give this call-in, that happens at these call-ins. These are a list of the prohibited trigger offenses. We make sure that they know writtenly and verbally that these offenses are the ones that will not be tolerated and that will bring on the fast-tracking and the unwanted attention. Here's some call-in results. We've had five, as Lieutenant Syke mentioned, we've had 84 total called in. Twenty-five have attended to some degree or another the resource meetings that we provide. Eight have fully completed them, and we have, right now from our last call-in, we have eight that are currently attending our resource meetings, and we have several that are currently These are some, continuing with the results, we have 10 that have committed trigger offenses, two are in custody, we have six that are awaiting trial, one is adjudicated, and then we have one pending indictment. So we have addressed those that have violated the trigger offenses. The success essential classes are counted a hub of where our resources stem from. They are, they have to complete eight classes that actually help them with job readiness skills, it helps them with anger management mindsets that really prepare them to become productive citizens and maybe enter into a job situation. So we are real excited about the success of our classes and our employability skill series. Here is one of the guys that came to our very first call-in, Levi Williams, and I am so impressed and proud of his success. He started, he was one of the guys that you might look at, that you think would never change, and he actually tapped into our resources to the fullest extent, and he is doing very well. He is a success story that will make this program worthwhile within itself. Here's another young man, and one of the things we stress at the meeting is that they also share this information and the fact that there's help available with their associates and group members, and he came through a referral, and he's also played, well, actually just followed to the fullest extent. He's helped out in mentoring, and he's also working, and he's also a very successful And then here are some, they've written some testimonies and just talked about what the program as a total has meant to their lives and their families. So with that, any questions?
Any questions? Mayor, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, but I've attended and I've participated in this program, and I just want to commend not only the folks that are here that are presenting, but the real impact of this, he mentioned Ms. Schufert, the real impact is the people that are sitting here, when they look around, it's not strangers that they're looking at, it's people that know them and people that have known them since they were small children. And when you see them, look around the room, and you see and you hear the stories like Ms. Schufert tells, it really gets people's attention. And although I've heard her story a couple times, when you hear it, no matter how many times you've heard it, it really makes an impact on you, and I think that it makes a tremendous difference, and the eight people that have changed their lives, it's certainly made a difference in their lives, and it's well worth every effort that's put into it. Well, it's made a difference. If you've got eight people's lives changed, it's made a difference in 32 or 40 or 48 lives directly associated with them, and you don't know how many victims have been spared the ordeal of being a victim of crime. Good job. Thank you.
I want to applaud your efforts.
Next department report, I'll ask the city's deputy city attorney, Ms. Arneeta Dula, to come to the podium and present legal counsel's advisory opinion on the conflict of interest policy, and I'm sure Mr. Crone will want to add his comments to her presentation as
Mayor, city council members, Mr. Crone and Mr. Berry, I stand before you tonight to present an advisory opinion that has been prepared by city attorney John Crone and me. Specifically, on December, at a December 20th, 2011 council meeting, the city council voted to approve construction of a structure on Union Square. This structure was ultimately named the Sales on the Square, and it was built as an outdoor pavilion to serve as a venue for multiple events and activities, including housing the downtown Hickory Farmers Market, concerts, recognition ceremonies, memorial ceremonies, and other events. This particular opinion is being prepared at the request of council member Jill Patton. At the time of the vote, Ms. Patton was serving on the Board of Directors for the Farmers Market. She participated in the discussion about the proposed structure and the vote, which was a unanimous decision approving construction of the structure. Recently, the Hickory Daily Record ran an article with the headline "Conflict of Interest Questions Raised About Two Members." The article stated that Ms. Patton and Ms. Fox appeared to have acted in violation of the city's conflict of interest policy when the council voted on the construction of the Sales. The article goes on to state that Ms. Patton failed to disclose her interest in the Farmers Market or withdraw from the discussion at the December meeting, thereby potentially failing to uphold the policy. The policy in question being the city's conflict of interest policy, which was incorporated as Appendix One into the Code of Ethics for the City Council of Hickory, adopted September 7th, 2010 by the Hickory City Council. As a result of the article, Ms. Patton pursuant to section G, Appendix One, Conflict of Interest, she requested the Hickory City Attorney, Mr. Crone, and myself to issue an advisory opinion regarding her past role as a member of the Farmers Market Board of Directors as it related to her voting on matters that have and may from time to time come before Hickory City Council. So I'd like to preface my remarks tonight or my presentation tonight by saying, although there were many issues raised by the recent Hickory Daily Record article, this advisory opinion and presentation will be limited to the question and issue or issue raised by council member Patton. I'd also like to preface my comments by stating that although Ms. Patton requested this particular advisory opinion, this opinion is being submitted to the entire city council, and at the, according to Mr. Crone and to me, this opinion is applicable to all city council members who may have similar questions or concerns. The particular question presented is, is it a conflict of interest for a council member to serve on a nonprofit's Board of Directors and then vote on a matter before council that is related? that is related to the nonprofit board? And you have the entire memorandum before you, but I'm going to be highlighting just a few sections of it and encourage you, of course, to read it at your leisure. As a result of the request, Mr. Crone and I reviewed North Carolina state law, various treatises written by scholars from the University of North Carolina School of Government and the City of Hickory's Code of Ethics and the attached Appendix One, Conflict of Interest. In general, this is our advisory opinion. North Carolina General Statute 168-75 requires that council members vote on all matters that come before council. Specifically, that statute reads as follows, in part, quote, "No member shall be excused from voting except upon matters involving the member's own financial interests or official conduct or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234, 168-381 Part D, or 168-388 Part E1." Specifically, this statute goes on to establish an exception to the rule, general rule, only in two circumstances. One, when there's a question before the council that involves the council member's own financial interest, or two, when the matter involves his or her official conduct, and as number three was stated, read when it involves a particular matter that is prohibited under the relevant statutes. In addition to this particular statute, 168-75, North Carolina General Statute 14-234, which is actually in the Criminals section of the, of the North Carolina statutes, and the council's Code of Ethics, more particularly the conflict of interest policy, which I would like to state for the record, it is a policy, it is not an ordinance, there's a distinction, but the conflict of interest policy in particular, they preclude a council member from voting on a matter of which he or she may have a conflict of interest. However, I'd like to further explain how the particular definitions outlined in the conflict of interest policy tie in with the relevant North Carolina General Statutes. First of all, Appendix One, Section A4, mirrors North Carolina law by defining an interest as following, quote, "A direct or indirect pecuniary or material benefit accruing to a city official as a result of a contract or transaction which is or may be the subject of an official act or action by or with the city," end quote. Section A4, particularly subsection four, further states, "A city council official shall be deemed to have an interest in the affairs of any nonprofit organization on which the mayor or any member of the city council currently serves as an officer, director, or a board member." The particular article, newspaper article in question, basically posits that mere membership on the Farmers Market Board by itself appears to have violated the city's policy when council voted on the Sales Construction Project. However, according to our analysis and research, this analysis is based on a misreading, is predicated on a misreading and a misinterpretation of the conflict of interest policy. Section A4, subsection four, serves to only delineate the specific familial, business, or organizational relationships from which a council member may not derive a direct or indirect financial benefit as the result of a contract or transaction that is the subject of an official action with the city. Basically, subsection A4, subsection four, it must be read in conjunction with the first sentence of A4. The first sentence clearly defines the prohibited interest as a direct or indirect pecuniary or material benefit accruing to a city official as the result of a contract or transaction which is or may be the subject of an official action, act or action by with the city. In other words, to read subsection A4, subsection four, which again talks about being a member of a nonprofit Board of Directors, to read it independently of the entire definition gives rise to at least a strained or if not actually incorrect interpretation of the entire definition. If membership on a nonprofit board by itself is the interest that is prohibited by the conflict of interest policy, then it stands to reason that a council member could not have any immediate family members, as section A4 also states, quote, "A city official shall be deemed to have an interest in the affairs of, one, any person in his immediate household." An immediate household is defined as being the city official, his or her spouse, and all dependent children of the city official. If you apply the reasoning of the article, you, Ms. Meany, Mrs. Patton, and any other city council members would be in perpetual violation of the policy simply by having a spouse or dependent children or basically just being yourself. Thus, unless you receive a direct or indirect personal financial gain as a result of your participation on the board of a nonprofit organization, including the Farmers Market, you are not precluded from voting on matters involving the nonprofit organization which may have or will subsequently come before council. Our analysis is supported by Professor Emeritus Gordon Whitaker. He is Professor Emeritus from the UNC School of Government. He is actually quoted in the article. And Professor Whitaker is quoted as saying, "A board member has an pecuniary interest for the nonprofit. If you're on the board of the Y, you don't have a pecuniary interest from the Y." Our analysis is further supported by A. Fleming Bell II, who is a current professor at the UNC School of Government. Professor Bell is an expert on ethics for public officials. In his book, Ethics, Conflicts in Offices: A Guide for Local Officials, he analyzes the applicability of the North Carolina state laws on conflict of interests in relationship to nonprofits, where a public official is also a member of a nonprofit organization. He does not state in his book that public officials cannot be members of nonprofit boards. He also does not state that a public official's mere membership on a nonprofit board automatically creates a prohibited conflict of interest. Instead, the facts surrounding any contractual matter involving the public body and the nonprofit must be examined to determine the applicability of the law. He says that, quote, "In most instances, the contractual benefits in such an arrangement actually flow to the organization rather than to the individual persons affiliated with the organization so that the statute," meaning specifically statute 14-234, isn't violated. Therefore, based upon our analysis of the North Carolina state laws, which have been mentioned, the City of Hickory's Code of Ethics, including the conflict of interest policy and other pertinent treatises, we advise that unless in your role as board members of a nonprofit organization, including the Farmers Market or any other nonprofit board, you are receiving personal financial or material gain, you are not precluded from voting on matters pertaining to that nonprofit organization that may have come or will come before the city council. In fact, one can argue that if you refrain from voting on matters which do not involve a direct or indirect pecuniary or material interest to you, the failure to vote itself is a breach of your ethics and a violation of North Carolina state law. If you have any questions, I'll certainly be glad to entertain them and answer them to the best of my abilities.
It's that last statement, I think, that sums it up quite well. We're required to vote.
Yes, you are.
Unless we proceed.
And I will add one thing, that even in recusing yourselves, the entire council must vote on that recusal. It has to be a vote, it's just not recusal and you're out because you're required to vote by law.
Well, in fact, in fact, in the case cited in the newspaper, I would have not voted to let them be recused. That would have been a violation of my duty.
Any other questions?
No, but I do want to state that I did request this legal opinion from staff since the reporting of Hickory Daily Record was, I believe, misleading and inaccurate. On several occasions, I spoke to the reporter and made clear on every one of those occasions that I was not involved in any conflict of interest. I requested that he contact our city staff, they could help him understand our policy. And instead of verifying the policy with staff, who could have corrected his assumptions, an inaccurate report was published. As a council, we try our best to be transparent, and since I consider my position on council to be an honor, I do my best to maintain a high standard of ethics. Consulting with the School of Government confirmed that there was no conflict of interest, so it was especially disappointing to me that parts of our policy were taken out of context and used to imply impropriety on my part. It's a disservice to our council and the community when articles such as this are published to promote an agenda rather than facts. I stand by my decision to vote for the Sales. The Sales have proven to be a growing asset for our city. There are many positives to report in Hickory and hope that the Hickory Daily Record will spotlight growth and positives for our community.
Do we have any appointments?
I do. I have Reverend Antonio Logan to the Community Relations Council, and I also have Andrew Straw for the at-large position of the Community appearance.
And I would also like to nominate Ms. Nancy Yang to the Community Relations Council.
With regards to the Tourism Development Authority, actually, the agenda states that the appointment is for owner, operator of hotel motels or other taxable accommodations in the City of Hickory. Actually, and I'll be, I'll stand corrected if it's not the case, the statute is that they would be owner, operator of hotels, motels, or other taxable accommodations in the City of Hickory or Connaught.
That's what the law says.
Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I will offer for nomination, Mr. Kevin Patel. He is the owner and operator of the McKinta on Hickory Church Road. I'm not, I'm not able this time to offer Ms. Keever as, to nomination to the Tourism Development Authority. That might have to come at the next meeting.
I'd like to nominate Susan Sigler, Parks and Recreation.
I don't have any nominations, but I encourage anyone who knows anybody from Ward Three that's interested in the Art Commission, give me a call. I've been looking.
I'd like to appoint to the Public Art Commission as at-large positions, Phil Berenger and Sean Parnell. Any others? Do we have a motion to accept those nominations?
I'm ready to accept.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's she down. Petitions, requests, matters not on the agenda. General comments?
I'd like to comment on the meditation garden dedication this afternoon. It was wonderful and it shows one of the partnerships that we're looking for, for our Inspiring Spaces. It was a statue called Fly Away that was given to the city by St. Aloysius Catholic Church, and it was a very nice, very hot outside ceremony, but it was very well attended and it just shows the partnerships that are forming through our Inspiring Spaces that will lend us to be able to do more with the dollars that we have.
Well, I was unable to attend, but I went over later in the afternoon. I found, I found the statue and that location uplifting, and I'm not certain exactly why, but there's something that just felt good about being there. And so, I called the representative of St. Aloysius Church, who did this in honor of their 100th anniversary here in Hickory, and expressed my appreciation, and I'm certain other council members feel the same way. And then, I called Mr. Mac McLeod, as head of Parks and Recreation, to see if we might plant some trees behind that statue because it is very hot and I felt like the trees, there was something about the statue of this little girl who, it just didn't need to seem so hot right there. Plus, we will have people meditating who could use privacy perhaps, and I just felt that a few trees around that might, might be a plus. But it was uplifting and marvelous.
Mayor, I'd like to recognize and thank the Reverend Dr. T. Anthony Spearman, who's in our audience tonight. He is at the Clinton Tabernacle AME Zion Church. Not only has he participated in the call-in that the Police Department was talking about and been very effective in that role, but recently, he sponsored a group of people, it was over a thousand people, that came and spent the week in Hickory, stayed in our motels, ate at our restaurants, and he invited me and I went over there one night, but he brought a group of people from home missions, and they were from all over North Carolina. I got to speak with several of them, they were, they were very complimentary of our city, and I'd just like to thank Dr. Spearman because he was the person that really brought them to Hickory. And so, thank you, Dr. Spearman.
I had a comment, I don't know who all was there, but I just, it's been a while since the 4th of July, but the Western Piedmont Symphony's concert downtown was a beautiful event and very well attended. I think there were probably over 2,000 people there. It was, it was a fantastic event and I did thank John Ross and the symphony.
That came during my vacation, but I've heard wonderful things about it from many sources and including a phone call from a person who just wanted to express appreciation for, for the venue and the event. Salvation Army had a ribbon cutting last Friday for transitional housing that is for men. They said that they feel like there are some facilities for families with children and some facilities for women, but this is transitional housing for men to learn how to budget their money, get a job, have a place to stay while they get a nest egg, pay deposits, rent deposits, utility deposits, and they are hoping, they have 11, 11 beds, and they're hoping to run people through that process about every six to nine months. So, you can see that that has an impact on a lot of people. Another partnership that, that's working for us.
I had the opportunity actually earlier today to be updated with regards to Duke Energy and the FERC relicensing. Of course, we've had lots of rain and actually had, had some flooding issues, but as you recall, back in 2007, we spent a lot of time and effort on that relicensing application and became a signatory to the relicensing application that Duke submitted to the, to the federal government. The update is, and this is astounding to me and speaks probably to the bureaucracy at the federal level, they still don't have a license now, six years later. The reason I was calling was to find out, some of those, the license required some improvements to Lake Hickory to increase access to Lake Hickory for swimming, to swimming areas. I think it had some canoe launches, they were doing, supposed to do flows out of Oxford Dam for kayaking and those kinds of things. And I, you know, I figured seven years later, we ought to be seeing some of that stuff. But apparently, the, the clock doesn't start ticking until the license is issued, which according to the county's representative, might be next year, so.
They could just go ahead and start those improvements though, couldn't they?
Well, they could, but they're, but they're not. So, I just thought that was astounding that where seven years later, there's still not a license.
Well, I didn't want to pick on Duke Energy, but since you brought it up, you know, I was one of the mayor's requested to testify in the rate case. I don't know how effective that was, but, but I want everyone to know, I spoke up for holding the line on utility fees. But you mentioned the lake. On my vacation, I was at a location that, that had a paddleboard competition and kayak races. So, I came back, I talked to Mrs. Pitts because I knew she has active wellcrafted and all of that, and... And anyway, she put me in touch with a gentleman who has been pursuing this very thing, to have a competition on Lake Hickory for paddleboarding, which apparently is getting to be, you young people, is that getting to be a pretty hot thing, the stand-up paddleboarding? My kids are into it, and they say it's great, so. So maybe we'll end up with a tournament out of that, but it'd sure be nice if Duke Energy would help us out with that in that regard.
Yeah, I agree.
And something I'm going to bring up, this is kind of spur of the moment, but as I was coming down the street, I've had a call today and a call three days ago concerning some incidents involving homeless. And in front of the Harbor House, Harper House, a gentleman was urinating and drunk and staggering up against the wall. I'd like to ask staff to help us see if there's some way we can look into this situation and determine if we have to have our citizens subjected to those kinds of incidents. Is there a way that we can be, that we can do what we can to take care of homeless needs, what is reasonable, but yet not have to be subjected to that? I know that's a difficult question, but, and I'm not going to put it all on the staff. We may need to get a group of interested citizens, citizens who, we want citizens who have big hearts toward the downtrodden, but at the same time, recognize the impression that is giving of our city if a visitor had been going down that street tonight at 6:50. Any other comments, issues, questions before we go to the closed session? Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mr. Layle. All in favor, please say aye.
Wait, let me, I forgot. Pardon me. Let me, as most of you know, former mayor Bill McDonald is in Scott Memorial Hospital right now with bad case of pneumonia. And he wanted me, and I will pass this around, he has a little presentation for Sergeant, hang guess. When Sergeant Guess, when the German people came to Hickory, I don't know if you remember this, this had to be, you were 25 years old, you probably don't remember.
Look at those, just like.
The council could look at that. And Bill wanted you to have this book. So, and I do say, tell everybody that he is doing a lot better than he was Friday, and hopefully he'll get out. So, thank you.
That reminded me, too, the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association has been around for 20 years this August.
Well, I'll tell you here, we've got the young.
It's time to adjourn, Mayor.
We've got the young Bill McDonald, the young Floyd Lucas, and the young Hank Guess.
The younger Hank Guess.
Everybody wants to see it.
I want to see it. I thought they did growth there on your leg.
Doesn't look any different, does it?